All right. Thank you very much. And I see we're recording, so we'll call this meeting to order for Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. And this meeting is being recorded. All votes will be taken via roll call. And in attendance from the select board is myself, David Phil, Jane Nevin Smith, Joyce Chonglo, John Woskevitz, and Amy Parsons. And first order of business is public comments. And we're going to limit this to 15 minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes each so that others may speak. And when called on, just state your name and your residence for Hadley residents. If anybody's here for public comments. Turn your camera on way back. I see a Marian Parker is the first person I firsthand I saw. So go ahead.
Hi, thank you for permitting us to speak to this. So I support the town of Hadley opting out of the state of Massachusetts mosquito control program. Utilizing aerial spraying to control mosquito populations. I am supportive of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's efforts to protect the public from mosquito borne diseases like EEE. We do, I do not think, however, that extensive aerial broadcasting, broadcast spring is the right technique for prevention and management of localized disease outbreaks. The spray that they use Anvil 10 plus 10 and other similar pesticides are toxic and land to land dwelling and water dwelling living things and including invertebrates and dragonflies and beetles and fish. I support the Massachusetts Department's Public Health Plan for Management of Mosquito Born Diseases. The DPH Plan calls for limited use of pesticides based on the levels of mosquitoes and disease activity in a specific location. I also really think that the most important thing is to increase our monitoring of mosquitoes and mosquito borne diseases. Public education is going to be really important here. Personal protection of mosquito bites. Elimination of mosquito breeding sites. And targeted applications of pesticides when necessary, although I'd like to hope that we don't have to go there if we.
That is three minutes. I have muted Marian.
Okay. And Marian, are you a Hadley resident? I did. Okay, I saw, yes. And okay, next, Shell, that's the next hand I see. Go ahead.
Hi, Shell Harrow at 16 Barstow Lane. I see this as an issue of personal liberty, among other things, and also economic benefit to opt out of the state's program. On the personal liberty side, I think Hadley residents should have the right not to breathe toxic pesticides sprayed indiscriminately from the air or from a truck. And, you know, you can think of it similar to the, the need to, the desire to be free of wearing a mask in situations where one is not required. It's, if anything, I think having toxics enter your lungs should be even a higher claim of liberty than that. And there are alternative methods of mosquito control. Nobody loves mosquitoes. I don't think you'll find anybody here who will love mosquitoes. But there, there are other ways of doing this. This is an extreme step for a non-extreme problem right now. And also, I do want to point out, Chairman Phil, that you said 15 minutes for public comment, but when Carolyn sent out the notice, it was a half an hour.
Incorrect. We, this is not a public forum at this point. This is our usual 15. I'm looking at the agenda right here. And what was posted on Board Docs, and it says right there 15 minutes. So I'm not sure what you saw. But Carolyn and Mike, looking at the right thing?
Sorry, I'd have to look how, to see how I wrote that. I'd have to look back on how I replied.
Okay. Shell, are you done with your comments? Or, okay, right. While she's looking at that, Susan Garrett, that's the next hand I saw.
Thank you. I'm Susan Garrett. I live at Fiveler Anna Lane. And I would, I would really strongly urge the select board and Board of Health to opt out of this plan of Dr. of Governor Baker to do widespread spraying. First of all, we have a really low incidence of EEE, but even if we did have an incidence, this isn't the way to do it. It's, it's just a crazy idea. There are many scientists who've been looking at this and who, you know what, if all of us, when we go outside, where do we see the mosquito? They're hanging out under the foliage. And then they dart out and bite us, right? They're not, they're not hanging out in the air where the aerial spraying happens. But other, other things are. And so as other speakers have said, we're talking about toxic pesticides here that they would be spraying. Whether it's aerial spraying or truck spraying, that stuff spreads. I live in a little neighborhood with lots of children and people of all ages. I don't think people want to have toxic stuff coming into their backyards. I have an organic garden, vegetable garden. I don't want pesticides coming. I'm sure no one wants to breathe them. In fact, you know, they can affect, you know, they, they, we haven't, we have an insect apocalypse going on now. I don't know if anyone's heard of this, but it just look at your windshields. You don't have bugs on your windshields anymore because we've been killing all the insects. The insects are an important part of the whole, the whole system, right? Birds, invertebrates, everything. We need bugs. Maybe we don't like mosquitoes, but you know, there are other, if, if we come up against a terrible public health crisis, we can use larvicides to kill the larva. We can just remove standing water. There are many, many things to do. So I'm not going to go on because I'm sure other people want to talk, but I really, really hope that for the sake of everyone's health and for the environment that you do opt out. Thanks.
Correct. Thank you. And Shell, I did look at the posting from the clerk's office. It was posted for a 15 minute public comment session. Just a wire. All right, next, please. Michael Doctor, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm not very Zoom literate, I guess. Michael Doctor, 113 Bay Road. I'm a farmer in Hadley, and I urge you to opt out. I'm an organic farmer. There are a number of organic farms that depend on their livelihood for agriculture in this town. And if we are sprayed by mistake, we're out of business. And it's, it's that simple. We, we, we can no longer sell our product as organic. And so this is really a major threat to us, and it's something we're really concerned about. Most of us organic farmers have opted out. Every year, we send in a map of our land and tell the state, please don't spray this. We're organic farmers. Mistakes happen. I would feel a whole lot safer living in Hadley as a farmer if the town opted out. I'd feel a whole lot safer as a human being in Hadley if they didn't spray toxic pesticides to control a bug. You know, as a farmer, we are well versed at using non-toxic controls to deal with insects, to deal with pests, deal with disease and weeds. And, you know, if we can do it to produce food, we can do it to keep people from getting EEE and keep people from getting West Nile virus. You know, these, there are other ways of dealing with it. People can, can dress accordingly and keep their screens closed and wear bug repellent if they want to do that or not. If they don't, it's a personal choice thing, as Shell said. So that's my two cents. It's a little bit more valuable than two cents to me, though.
Okay, thank you. Next, I see Deborah Levinson.
Myself. Thank you. I want to emphasize tonight that opting out as I see it, is really about opting into a better approach for mosquito control. As a community with many farms and home gardens and natural areas, I think Hadley should be a leader on environmental matters. Aerial spraying of toxic chemicals endangers our most vulnerable residents as well as agricultural and other outdoor workers. But also, not only them, but also our food supplies, water, animals, pollinators, and other insects, potentially upsetting a critical ecological balance that keeps Hadley healthy and whole. Regarding effectiveness, aerial spraying, as I understand it, is at best a last resort. If and when all other methods of control fail and are necessary, spraying could be considered. But spraying targets adult mosquitoes and only those that happen to be in the line of fire at the time of spraying. Repeated sprays are often necessary then as new adults mature. The approach called Integrated Pest Management is a better choice. It's a long-term solution, not just a quick fix. It's more effective. It's less risky to public and environmental health, and it is recommended by both the United States Center for Disease Control and the EPA. It involves a multi-pronged approach, including public education, surveillance, and mitigation at an early stage of the mosquito life cycle. With this approach, we can identify high breeding areas and either eliminate the source or apply larvicide, larvicides to those targets before the mosquitoes even hatch. Alright, so I urge the select board to opt us out of the aerial spraying program and put our attention and resources toward developing a comprehensive plan that prioritizes public health and the long-term health of the environment. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have time for one more. Anybody else? Michelle?
Yeah, I'd also advocate for us opting out. There are a lot of organizations that are opposed to sort of blanket spraying. One of them is Mass Audubon. I'd also like to point out that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is not an advocate of blanket, blanket aerial spraying. They prefer to use an arsenal of other things like public education, personal protection. And also, I wanted to point out that we don't have a really robust monitoring system in the state to track mosquito borne disease. So we really don't know till a case comes up. So we could use more sentinel tracking. Another thing I wanted to point out too, while one is pollinators are at risk in the state, and this harms invertebrates. So we're really endangering agriculture and the ecosystem at the same time. The other thing to think about is the watershed, because I'm a member of the Friends of Lake Warner, and we and other groups that concern ourselves with water quality are concerned about things going downstream into the watershed, into the lakes, rivers, and ponds. And invertebrates are susceptible to being killed. We have enough problems trying to support the wildlife that should be there, that's threatened from all sorts of nutrient overloads and other, and pollutants. And this would just add to that problem.
David?
Yes.
Greg Mish is on. Can the Board of Health speak for a moment?
Yep, let me just, that'll end our public comments, and now we'll move on to 3.1 aerial mosquito spraying. And there's a whole bunch of attachments in here for the public if they'd like to look in Board Docs. But otherwise, yes, Dr. Muller, go ahead.
Greg is, Greg is on. He's going to speak.
Greg.
Okay, David, I'd just like to tell you guys that on May 4th, the Board of Health discussed opting out of aerial mosquito spraying, and we voted three to nothing in favor of recommending this opt-out option. A little bit of background, triple E outbreaks occur every 10 or 20 years, 10 to 20 years. Each outbreak lasts approximately two to three years. The most recent outbreak started in the summer of 2019. There were 12 cases in the state in 2019. Six deaths. In 2020, there were five cases in the state, none in Hampshire County. Triple E infection goes back and forth between infected birds and mosquitoes. Humans get the virus from the bite of an infected mosquito. Humans don't pass on the virus. They're not contagious. Many mammals can get the virus from the bite of an infected mosquito, not just humans, but infected mammals do not lead to human infection. So Hadley is a member of this Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District. This district is trying, but it's somewhat underfunded, so they're not able to test accurately the mosquito population. So our reasoning in recommending that we opt out was the incidence of triple E in Hampshire County is quite low. We can take steps to lower our own personal risk by taking precautions to avoid mosquito bites. Use mosquito repellent when you're outdoors. Wear long sleeves and pants and socks when appropriate. And remove your own areas of standing water on your property. So we're recommending that the town opt out of this program, and the Board of Health is willing to work on an alternative to aerial spraying with the community, if you would task us with doing that. That's it.
Okay. And so Carolyn, do you want to give us a little bit of background of what the process is here if we were to choose to opt out? I know you've been talking to Senator Comerford's office and whatnot.
Yeah, you, there is a plan. I did talk to some area town administrators as well. There is a plan that Greg just referred to. It's a lengthy application. It can be done, but we would have to do it by the 28th, I think. Is that the deadline, Greg?
Yeah. We said the deadline ended from its initial date.
Right, they did extend it, extend it. So there is, you would have to have that plan sent and approved. I have that letter. So I'm just looking to see who will get sent to EEA. Oh, opt out, yeah. So that would have to be filled out and sent. But the, the plan is, it was a little confusing. I couldn't get anybody from the state to call me back. It's a little confusing as to what's the minimum. It looked like minimum, the minimum plan was education and outreach. But once you got into the application, it became much more complicated. So, you know, I did get a variety of information from different sources, like the town administrator in area towns. Some are opting in, some are opting out. And then I talked to Senator Comerford's two staff members who explained about mosquito spraying in general. And that this was an initiative that Senator Comerford put a bill on last year for the opt-out ability.
Hey, David.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
I've been following it for a few years, and when we decided on the testing process with UMass, I know they're underfunded for testing right now. But I've been following it on the water side, the drinking water side. Narragansett Bay, out east near Cape Cod, where they've had quite a few horses come down with this disease and pass away. They actually sprayed pretty close to the drinking water, surface water supply out east. And they tested the water through the water system on the outfalls. And they, their spraying today is so accurate that minimal overspray go into the drinking water supply with the wetlands all around it.
Anybody else? Select word?
John, is that, are you talking about the larvicide or the adulticide? The larvicide, I believe, is what they spray, you know, around bodies of water or in areas where they, where the mosquitoes are reproducing.
Exactly. Most of it was tidal water, I believe.
Right. When, when they, when they do aerial spraying, they use different, they use adulticides, which are the toxic chemicals that we're talking about here or that people have mentioned.
Yeah, I tried to get it together for today, but I couldn't find it. I read it last fall, actually, because I think that's when they did it. And I don't even remember. I know Narragansett Bay did it down in Rhode Island. And, and I know they just did it out east. We had a seminar for water continuing education credits, and one of the people had spoke about it that was actually against it and mentioned for it. So, you know, it's, it's a tough decision to make. I mean, this is a last ditch effort, so if we ever had to do something on a spur of a moment, last second, then this would be an option for us, you know?
So in 19, 2018, we joined the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control Commission and paid them $5,000. What does that give us?
Yeah, and they were supposed to test, and then they ran out of funding. And I don't even know, they, they were doing all the testing up at UMass, but I don't know if they're still doing it right now or not with COVID and everything going on.
So I don't know what they're actually doing, but I can tell you that that was something that was championed by the Board of Health in 2018, because I remember the town meeting warrant article to join the mosquito control district.
Yeah.
And part of that plan, if you look at their website, is in the last ditch effort. Like somebody mentioned, if the adult mosquitoes are out of control, then to use the judicious use of aerial spraying. And that's part of their, if you go to the website, the state website, you can see all the various mosquito control districts and what their plan is. So, but what they're actually doing, I'm not sure.
Okay, but that's as a last result when the problem is severe. I, I haven't heard any data that there's a problem in Hampshire County. And I'm hearing a lot of kickback from people who are concerned for the other pollinators in the area, for the organic farmers, for the birds who eat the bugs, and for the humans who breathe the fumes. So I think we should assume that Pioneer Valley Mosquito Commission has the alternative plan. We're a member of that board, and we should opt out.
Mosquito Control Commission or District is, part of their plan is spraying. If you look on their website, their mosquito control plan calls for larvicides, adulticides, aerial spraying, vehicle spraying, backpack spraying, as, as needed.
When there is an issue.
Correct.
We don't have an issue.
And that's what, that's what the state's doing, too. The state's not going to just go out there and start blasting, you know, millions of dollars worth of chemicals. They're talking about doing it when there's an issue.
You know, the non-organic farmers have been spraying produce now since they came out with spray. There, there's, they're really regulated. They, they too have to have continuing education credits when they spray. There's farmers that use it all year long.
All right, so what are we going to do?
Raise your hand.
No, we're not, we're not taking more public comments, sorry.
She's Board of Health.
No, I was talking, Michael Doctor had a hand up, so.
She's on the board. She's the Board of Health.
No, no, I was talking about somebody else. I didn't see Margaret's hand. Margaret, go ahead.
So I just want to get some clarity around this. So the Board of Health is against it. People on this meeting also voiced their opposition to it. Where does that leave the select board if the Board of Health and the people on this committee on this meeting also opt out?
Not sure what your question is. If the people on the call opt out?
I don't know where the select board stands on this.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
I, I was contemplating what I've been wanting to say or to do. It's not that we wouldn't want to follow what the Board has health has said. This originally, when we opted into the Pioneer Valley for the spraying or this program, it was a town meeting vote. So we did not, as a select board, actually make the sole movement. Yes, you have people on tonight that are definitely against any type of spraying. I have talked to others, which really has not affected them, of course, because they're not organic. And I also have talked to, you know, we've talked to other farmers and things about their animals and whatnot, and it has not affected them also. So it's not necessarily what I would think that we should do. I think, again, this is a hard decision because it originally was voted on at town meeting. So is it something that we bring back to town meeting in the fall? Do we, what do we do for the time being? Suspend it? Until we have a firmer vote in the fall? We have not sprayed. I know, growing up as a child, we sprayed every summer. I grew up in North Hampton. My family had a 300 acre farm in Whately. And everybody was sprayed every year because the mosquitoes were so thick. I don't recall anybody really having any more repercussions than they did with other pesticides that they did. Well, I'm 72 years old, so you can imagine what kind of pesticides they used back when I was a kid. And actually, you know, that wasn't anything that was a detriment to my family. But again, you don't know how other families were affected by it. So, you know, I'm not sure if we just need to bring this back to town meeting and not vote on this at most. Right now, all we have that have spoken tonight are people that are against it, and I do appreciate the Board of Health and their decision. I certainly wouldn't want to interfere with how the Board of Health would like to do this, and if they're going to take the reins and do alternative things, because it's not going to come from the select board. So, as I feel. So if you, the select, if the Board of Health would like to take this part over and under their wings, then, you know, I'm all for that.
I think the Board of Health, this is Greg Mish speaking for the Board of Health. I think we're willing to do that. When we talked about this, we felt that the frequency of the infections is minimal. There are plenty of alternatives out there. And even if it's just paperwork and filing stuff, we're willing to do that. We think it's that important to opt out.
So I'll make a motion behind Joyce's suggestion that we turn this over to the Board of Health to make the paperwork and basically opt out of the spring. And if we need to, we can take it to town meeting in the fall.
I want it on the agenda in the fall at town meeting. I want other people heard beside other people that have spoken tonight. I think that's only fair. We have a minority, more or less, compared to the amount of people that live here in town and others that do farming here in town. We have both sides. So I think it would be only fair that we would bring it back to the fall town meeting to ask the general public, people that participate in town meeting, what they think.
Okay, I'll make that part of that motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Jane, second by Joyce. Any other discussion on this? All right, Jennifer, roll call.
Oh, I had a quick question. Sorry, it took me a second to unmute it. So if we're pushing this to fall town meeting, is, is there, is there not a decision that we have to make for this mosquito season?
Correct. We have to opt out by the 28th. Is that right?
Right.
Yeah, so, so we voted in on this in 18, so it's been three years. We've never had to spray. I don't see any reason to opt out of it right now. And if you want to bring it back to town meeting, then absolutely we can do that. You know, I, I missed you yesterday, Michael. I was going to have this discussion with you, and I seen you down the barn, and you disappeared. But I have talked to other farmers, and like I said, that they don't have a problem with, with the correct spraying, you know? It's not like it used.
I mean, I'm a farmer. Like, we, we have over 1,000 animals, so we haven't had any issues or seen anything. And I haven't, I would, I mean, I would. And I haven't, I would, I mean, I would have heard too from other farmers being who I am, um, and I haven't. But, um, so I just have a, so the current motion on the table is to send this to fall town meeting, but that doesn't change what we need to do for this year, or do we, if we do nothing, then we're just continued opted in?
No. The motion was to opt out, give it to the Board of Health to write the paperwork and take it to fall town meeting.
So opt out for this season and then uh, go to town meeting and and revote it in the fall.
And the Board of Health would.
Okay, and that would be for the and that would be, so we're opting out for this year. We're deciding for the whole town right now to opt out for this year. And then we're taking it to fall town meeting for next year and letting everyone decide for next year. Is that?
Yes.
Right.
Correct, if we want to remain in that type of program.
And we haven't had, we've been opted in since twenty eighteen and we haven't sprayed. Is that right?
That that's the point I made, you know, but is this, is opt out, opt out of everything for good? Or is this opt out just for this season, this, for this summer season?
I'm saying to opt out just for this summer season.
That's how I read it. It's this summer.
Hey, I I I specifically didn't see that in there. You know, UMass, UMass tests mosquitoes, they test birds, they test uh, ticks, they test anything you can send over there still. And uh, you know, I I don't know how involved so many people are, but I know, I know some people that sent the things over and a lot of them died of triple E, you know, the birds did. So, you know, I don't, I don't, maybe it won't be an issue ever, but we we've already got proof that that it is here in a minimal amount.
Alright, um, anything else before we vote?
David, can I just, I I guess I need two clarifications. What if, what motion, what are you asking to put on in the fall? And two, um, I don't think the participation in the Pioneer Valley uh, mosquito control program has anything to do whether opting in or out.
The testing part is, will still be there.
Yes, so I, it sounded like you guys were mixing the two.
Right.
So those are two separate things. So can you clarify what you're, what you want to postpone until the special town meeting?
So the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District, I believe is the name of it, is on their website or on the state website, part of their control plan is testing, larvicide, adult side, spraying as needed, backpack, aerial, vehicle spraying. So we voted in twenty eighteen, actually, town meeting overwhelmingly voted to join that mosquito control district.
Right.
Spraying is a possibility to control these mosquitoes. Uh, what Jane's motion is, I believe, and correction from Ron Jane, was to opt out for this year, which would mean that the Board of Health would submit the paperwork for the opt-out process to the state. And we would put this on the town meeting warrant for special town meeting in the fall and let the voters decide if they would like to get out of the mosquito control district and, you know, where spraying isn't an option anymore. Because right now that that mosquito district spraying is an option.
If we opt out, it doesn't necessarily take us out of the district and they still continue to test. So I don't think that the question of getting out of the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control Commission is part of that question. The question is specifically about spraying and how the town as a whole feels about it as opposed to a smaller group that we're seeing tonight.
I understand now, thank you.
Okay, last question, Jennifer?
Roll call that Phil?
No.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Miss Devon?
No.
And Parsons? No. That's three two, thank you.
And just for the public that would like to opt out, they can opt out their own land, their own farms, their own property, just like they've been allowed to do each each year.
You know, you, do you still want to make a motion to turn this over to the Board of Health now and bring it back to town meeting? Because there's obviously gonna be a lot more discussion about this down the road here, obviously.
Yeah, if you want to make that motion to put it on a fall town meeting to um, not participate in any spraying or whatnot, then make that.
I'll make, I'll make that motion to put it on fall town meeting for whether to opt in for spraying or not.
One second.
Alright, any discussion on that?
I just wanted to say that I, like, that was why I voted no. I just felt like it was kind of down to the wire and I felt like the whole town didn't have an opportunity to vote on it again. So that's why I voted no to that.
Exactly. I think if something happens this year and it's not a dry year again, and uh, we do need to do something, you know, I I hate to opt out and then end up having some trouble here.
Yeah, and I understand that too. I was torn between the two. Um, giving people the opportunity, like I said, it was originated at town meeting and I feel like um, they should also have the opportunity and just a small amount of people um, to make that option. So that's why I went the way I did tonight.
Okay, um, Jennifer?
Roll call that Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Devon?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have annual town meeting public forum. And uh, Jennifer's gonna share a PowerPoint, I believe. Maybe. There we go.
And we're not doing questions and answers on this, correct?
Uh, we, we usually do. As part of the forum, so people have questions, they just can't advocate for or against anything.
Okay. So this isn't gonna be any big discussion here tonight on twenty-seven articles.
Usually it's not. It could be, but usually it's not.
Well, I won't be with you.
Come on, it's early still, Joyce.
Oh, I've been up since four thirty, so not early for me. Go for it. Let's go.
Jennifer, can you make that bigger? Or wait a minute, maybe it's my screen. I apologize. There we go.
No, it's small.
Well, that's fine. We'll just go off of that. Alright, um, so this is the annual town meeting warrant review, public forum. Uh, the town meeting is the twenty-second at one P M at the Hopkins Athletic Fields. It will be outside, so I will um, oh, on behalf of Randy, I will say, bring your umbrella, bring your uh, water, bring your chairs, bring, just be ready. We're gonna try to do this outside rather than put people inside. Say that again, Jane?
And sunscreen. Things to pack.
Yep, uh, the fire department is buying water, ice, that kind of stuff. So hopefully, just like last time, we'll have plenty of fluids to hydrate people with. Um, it's, looks like it's gonna be warm, just like last year though, so. Alright, could I get the next slide? Did I freeze?
I think Jennifer froze.
I, I'm frozen.
Is the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint's frozen?
Uh, yeah, I see the the first screen, the first slide. Can I get the next one? Is that my computer or Jennifer yours?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, I can.
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay, so apparently my desktop is freezing. I think that there's something going on with the wifi. So if y'all give me just a second, I'm gonna switch to a laptop.
I'm a little bit dismayed that we're starting at one o'clock. I want you all to know that.
Well, while we're waiting for that, Randy, do you want to say anything about the town meeting while we're waiting?
Oh, um, I can't say much about anything, except it's gonna be, hopefully, just like last year, we'll make it through without getting uh, rained on. It's supposed to be in the eighties again, but cloudy, so it should be a, feel a little bit cooler. Um, as David said, just bring, be prepared for anything. And hopefully, the weather will cooperate and we can get this meeting done in, on Saturday and that'll be that.
Alright.
Looks like she's coming back.
There we go.
That looks better.
I'm muted. Y'all heard me say woo. I'm sorry, I'm gonna mute.
Alright. Alright, can you give me the next one? If it's work, there we go. Alright, so the intent of this, for those just listening, um, what's happening here? There we go, okay. Uh, is to provide voters with an overview uh, in context for annual town meeting, improve voters' understanding of warrant articles and offer voters an opportunity to ask questions. Um, next one. The forum is not intended to take a vote, favorable or unfavorable, provide any group or individual the opportunity to advocate for a particular article or to speak against any particular article. Alright, and here's the the ground rules here. All participants will be muted at all times unless they've been called on by the select board. Uh, to ask a question, please raise your hand, wave at us, just let us know that you're out there. Um, all participants wishing to speak have to identify themselves and uh, identify any professional affiliations that you may have that impact your comments. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes so that others may have a chance to speak. And time limits are strictly enforced to allow everyone an opportunity to speak. Be considerate of other speakers, whether you agree or disagree, and refrain from commenting out of turn. Any person showing disrespect to those speaking, uh, well, they'll be muted, so. Easy enough. Um, and I think next is the consent agenda. Carolyn, go ahead.
Okay, Grace, I I'm Grace. Joyce, I'm going to go quickly through just each topic on the consent agenda. Please have patience. I just want to explain a little bit about each one. Uh, so the consent agenda, the select board, the finance committee and the moderator, identify articles that generate no controversy, controversy, need no debate and can be properly voted by consent, but at town meeting, if someone wants one taken out, they can. So, uh, article number six is grants and gifts. This allows the town to accept grants and gifts throughout the fiscal year. So the town meeting does not need to be called when we receive grants and gifts. This is purely administrative. Article seven, chapter ninety of the consent agenda, this is the chapter ninety program. Presently, we receive about three hundred and sixty-five roughly um, from the state each year to help maintain our roads and bridges. This gives the town authority to spend this money. The short-term borrowing, this gives the treasurer the authority to borrow within the fiscal year in anticipation of funds. If we do not have the cash available, we haven't had to do this, but it's a good safeguard in case we ever needed to. Uh, the fund balance transfer, this was affectionately called by David Nixon, the sweep article, and basically uh, clean up for a, uh, clean up the money left over from a project that's already been completed or it's no longer needed. And we transfer the leftover balance to its original source, and this gives us the opportunity to reduce uh, borrowing authorization. Number ten is the water treatment uh, plant filtration membrane. And every year at town meeting, Hadley uh, transfers twenty-six thousand dollars from the water reserve fund to pay the ten-year down payment on the water, water filtration membrane units over at the water treatment plant. Uh, so that when the filters are needed to be replaced, you will have that amount of money. Number eleven is uh, again, uh, strictly administrative. It's CPA. It's three thousand dollars, which are administrative costs to help the CPA do any miscellaneous expenses they have throughout the year. And the set aside of ten percent of CPA funds for the three purposes that are required by law. Article nineteen is CPA, CPA extensions. These projects need more time to complete. Um, and this extends the sunset provision on those projects. And number twenty-seven, the moderator term is, the present term for moderator is one year, and this would be extending that term to three years. So the next one. Everybody comment on that picture. Jennifer loved that picture. It makes her happy every time she sees it. So this is the um, emergency rental assistance program for COVID nineteen. And this program provides temporary rental relief to Hadley residents who have experienced negative economic impact as a direct result of COVID nineteen and are unable to meet rent obligations. To qualify, an applicant would need to meet several requirements, including proof of residency, below a hundred percent of the area median income, hardship proof and need. And I, I'm, I can't tell if Dylan is on, if anyone has any questions. Dylan, if you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, uh, feel free to answer any questions that anyone has, uh, representing the Hadley Housing Economic Development Committee um, with this article. Um, and this is response to, um, started this off last year and it's been continued. Uh, the eviction moratorium at that time was December thirty-first of twenty twenty. Uh, it's since been pushed off. It is now June thirtieth. We did have a stopgap measure um, put together to provide rental assistance um, in the last four or five months. Uh, we saw zero successful applications come through that program. Um, but the program administer, uh, uh, Community Action Pioneer Valley, CAPB, uh, said that they saw a drop off in other local area programs like East Hamptons and Amherst uh, due to uh, additional finance or uh, federal stimulus money as well as tax returns coming in. Uh, CAPB did suggest that we should keep it um, as the eviction moratorium coming up might impact uh, rental need here in a couple, couple of weeks. Um, and we will, uh, right now, it's written to have a hundred thousand ask for the CPA. Uh, we are going to make an amendment that'll drop that to twenty-five thousand uh, in recognition of the uh, lack of successful applications coming through, but then also uh, to make sure that the program is in place and ready uh, in the event that we do see an uptick with the eviction moratorium.
And uh, Andy Morris-Friedman has a hand up?
Taking my question. Um, this is a confusing article because of the history uh, that you just went into. The original fifty thousand that was set aside by the select board is being returned to the select board. Is that the, correct?
That is correct. We had a sunset clause built in there. It will be returned to the uh, Hadley Affordable Housing Trust Fund that uh, was set up.
Okay, and um, um, uh, how much are the uh, administrative costs?
Uh, CAPV has a twelve, twelve percent administration fee. Um, that is below the target that we were uh, told to go after by the select board. Uh, and it's also lower than Amherst's fee that they negotiated, uh, and in line with East Hampton's fee. CAPV uh, by adding us as the third town that they were managing, was able to uh, kind of drop that cost for us and we saw those savings. And that is only on administered funds.
Okay, so it's not twelve percent of the twenty-five thousand, it's twelve percent of the money that's given out as grants.
That is correct. We don't pay anyone until someone is successfully approved in the work.
Okay, but my final question is, does the CPA committee know that you're going to make this amendment?
Uh, I believe Molly was in touch, uh, or I know Randy has his hand up. He might have more information.
Thank you for taking my questions.
Okay, so I'll speak. Um, the CPA does know what's going on. They had an emergency meeting last night and voted in favor of this twenty uh, reduction to twenty-five thousand dollars. And, excuse me, Dylan mentioned an amendment to it. Rather than do that on the floor, what I'm going to do is uh, read the article as twenty-five thousand dollars, explain that there's been a quote-unquote friendly amendment made because the article, uh, the the warrant was closed before the CPA fund could could make a vote on this, so rather than lengthen the process, we'll start off that way. Rather than lengthen the process, we'll start off that way.
That's very nice.
Okay, any last questions on article one? I don't see any other hands or anybody else waving at me, so. Okay, I think we can move to the next one.
Okay, the next is a CPA cemetery request. And the Community Preservation Act Committee presents the following requests. Sixty thousand for gravestone restoration and preservation at North Hadley Cemetery. Thirty thousand for gravestone restoration and preservation at North Hadley Cemetery. And sixty-five thousand for the replacing of a historic stone fence at Hockenham Cemetery. And if there's any questions, I know Amy is here and I'm not sure if Al Weinberg is here. But um if you have any questions, one of those could provide more information.
What's the difference between one and two? Besides thirty thousand dollars?
Where it's at.
They both say North Hadley Cemetery.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said one and two.
That's a typo on Jennifer's part, getting carried away because I love North Hadley that much.
One in Plainville, right?
Yes.
This is why we do this. Thank you, Jane.
Who is the other cemetery?
Plainville.
Plainville, thank you.
Alright, any questions on article two before we move on?
Plainville is the one on Mount Warner Road towards UMass.
Which one is which?
Plainville is Mount.
No, which which article? Which which number is which cemetery?
The sixty or the thirty?
Jennifer, two is Plainville? I think one is North Hadley because it need more work.
Yes.
So two will be Plainville.
Correct. And let me correct that and say it's Russellville. Russellville Cemetery, not Plainville.
So Russellville up by the Sunderland line?
Yes, North Hadley Cemetery, Russellville Cemetery, and then the fence at Hockenham.
Okay, so that's the one by the Sunderland line on Route forty-seven then.
Yep, I really have North Hadley on the brain.
That one's still in North Hadley.
Alright, last call for article two. Any questions? Alright.
Article three and article four are zoning bylaw definitions and zoning bylaw amendment. The fees in lieu of affordable housing prevention. And I'm, uh, I think that Jim Maxmaski is on as well as Bill Dwyer. If there would like to go into um some more detail on that.
One, sorry, there we go. Um, the but the zone bylaw definitions will take, for the most part, there is bylaw. There's definitions throughout the zoning bylaw. And this will consolidate them into into one single section, so they'll be a lot easier to find. And it'll instead of searching throughout various sections when you want to look for something. It'll also define some definitions that are not currently defined that uh that are in the bylaw.
So at town meeting, will you read every definition and the change or just the overviewing change and how it's going to happen?
Would you repeat that one again, please?
Randy knows what I'm asking.
Yeah, he'll be ruled out of order, Jane.
Thank you.
I will be happy to move to waive the reading of the article.
Wonderful.
Can I?
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion that uh tonight, these articles are available? Uh, and that people that are coming to town meeting, I would suggest that they review these articles before they come to town meeting. So that they know what the amendments are and what the changes are uh bylaws.
Absolutely, because it's gonna be hot and uncomfortable out there, so let's uh.
If they have any questions, email uh our administration and you can get them to the right person to get the right answers. Before town meeting.
Any questions on article three and four for planning board articles?
You didn't talk about article four, David.
Oh, I'm sorry, article three.
Alright, next.
Article four, I'll take over as moderator here, I guess. Jimmy, can you talk to us about article four?
Article four, yeah, these, the uh, we have a. We have affordable housing provision in the zoning bylaw where if you build more than six. Residences um or senior housings or whatever it may be, you need to provide for an affordable housing unit. Either rented or purchased depending on however it's being built. Or you could put it someplace else in town. Um, at last, at the two town meetings, at the annual town meeting last year. We instituted the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a a fund to basically address building affordable housings. Or in one sum, shape or form. This provision of the bylaw or amendment will allow a third option for the developer to put a fee. Into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, rather than putting something on their property or someplace else in town. Um, but is that an option? If they still think the fee is too high or they, whatever it may be, they can still build it themselves. And regulate it themselves as long as they are in accordance with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, any questions on four? I don't see anybody waving at me, so let's keep going.
Okay, number five is a stretch energy building code. Green Communities Program requires that the town adopt stretch energy code as one of five criteria for green communities. The green communities designation and access to grant funding. And I I think I saw Mark Ravinsky on the call and I think Tommy as well might be here, so if you have questions.
Good evening.
Mark, I think I saw Jack here, so if either either one of you want to talk.
Yeah, I could give a a rundown of it too. So, um, I'm Mark Ravinsky, I'm the Commonwealth Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Western Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Program. So, uh, Hadley is pursuing the Green Communities Designation. Green Communities Division provides grants, technical assistance and support for municipalities to reduce energy use. If Hadley were to achieve all five criteria of Green Communities designation, it would be awarded an initial designation grant of a hundred and thirty thousand. To be used on energy conservation measures. Uh, and once it has completed that grant, it would also be eligible to apply for competitive grants. Presently, eighty percent of communities in Massachusetts are green communities. Uh, to qualify as a green community within the state, the town or city needs to meet all five criteria. And one of these criteria is to minimize lifecycle costs of all new construction. Presently, Massachusetts gives communities two options for their building energy code. The first one is a base energy code and the second one is an optional stretch energy code. So the stretch energy code was developed in response to a call for improved building efficiency. So to meet criteria five of the Green Communities Designation, a a community must adopt the stretch energy code as the. The the code for the town. The stretch code can be adopted by the governing body, in this case for Hadley, it would be um a town meeting. And it can also be rescinded through town meeting too, so once you've adopted it, you could also rescind it. Um, though you wouldn't be a green community anymore. And of our two hundred and ninety-one communities that have adopted the stretch code, none of them have rescinded it. The stretch code, it's important to note that the stretch code only applies to new uh residential construction. New commercial buildings greater than a hundred thousand square feet or greater than four thousand square feet if they're considered high energy users. Um, that's sort of the the rundown of it and I'm available for any questions if anybody has any.
Jack had his hand up, Jack?
Yeah, David, Randy, can Mark speak to this warrant item at town meeting? You know, he's not a Hadley citizen?
Yes, he will be able to. One of the uh uh thing, issues that are granted with the consent agenda. Is for people to speak uh like Mark.
Does permission need to be requested?
Residents and somebody like that, yeah, so he he should be allowed to speak without any problem.
Okay, so I won't have to request permission, he can just go for it, great.
I'll I'll look at the the way the consent agenda is worded. And if it becomes an issue, I I'm, we can get him to speak. I I don't see an issue with that.
And at town meeting, you'll also uh reveal the votes. It was recommended unanimously by the select board and recommended unanimously by the finance committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that was just a simple majority to let someone speak from out of town, wasn't it, Randy?
I believe so, John.
Yeah.
Any questions on article five? Uh, Tommy, go ahead.
Yes, I just, Mark, is it, so is it two ninety present municipalities that are in it out of three hundred and fifty-one?
Uh, Southwick, I was just there last night, voted, it's two hundred and ninety-one now. Out of out of the three hundred and fifty-one, so um I'm hoping Hadley will be two ninety-two on Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so let's keep going.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, it's the revolving funds and uh. I'll just address the ones that are going to have some changes done. There are a list of others. And but these we will be dissolving. Uh, it's the electrical inspection. Line item, the Russell School and the after-school program. That's all because Russell School and the after-school program, Russell School, we are not leasing um for usage for that building anymore. So there's no need to have a revolving fund. The after-school program. Uh, we are no longer, the Parks and Rec Department is no longer participating in that with the schools. And we used to be reimbursed for helping to coordinate that. And the electrical inspection uh will be functioning the same way as the the other inspection services. Um, they and they do not use a revolving fund. Um, and so about seventy-five thousand of, the total of all of those that's left in the revolving funds for those is seventy-five thousand. And that will be returned to the general fund.
Any questions? I don't see anybody waving. Let's keep going.
Okay, the Department of Public Works requests funding for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for three emergency water projects. Uh, Mount Warner Tree Removals, twenty thousand. Mount Holyoke Electrical Alarm System is one hundred thousand. Nightly Road Culvert Headwall Repair is forty thousand. And we do have some pictures and I'm gonna ask Chris if you want to explain what those projects are, Chris O'Farrell.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, let me begin with Mount Warner. Mount Warner, we have a, is is one of, one of the locations where we have our water storage tanks. And uh currently, we have an easement to the tanks. But for some reason, uh, we've we've not been able to maintain the easements in the past. So therefore align a lot of big trees. So our, so DEP has, in their annual inspection. Uh, one of the things they want us to take care of ASAP is making sure we have access. Also making sure that we have fence, we've done the fencing. So we are requesting for funds to take care of these trees. And also, in, because of the nature of the trees. And we have our main pipes going on going there, and these are aged old pipes. One of the ways to take out these trees, eh, why the cost is that level is because um. We attempt to minimize uh the um vibration. Uh, because we, apart from the roots, the pipes, uh, aged old pipes, we don't want any interference. So, but this, we are, that's where we have that amount, where we are requesting such amount for tree removal. Is to have an access easement. And hopefully, uh, we will maintain the easement whereby no more trees in that area. The other, the other project is um Mount Holyoke. Mount Holyoke is also, uh, we have a storage water tank, it's located along Lawrence Plain Road. Now, in this situation, it's a very, it's a big emergency because uh. The electrical, the electrical power source. Um, we're just managing one and one leg of that electrical power source because the power has failed. And so we are in a situation where we, if we don't do anything right now. Uh, we may not be able to communicate with the water tank. Now, the, so our request for money is to. Rewire the lines from Lawrence Plain Road into up into the mountains where we have the water tanks. And also to bring it, this will also give us opportunity to bring it up to code. When the current situation has lasted very long. At the time it was put in, uh, the construction was different than today. So we have all these big wire uh cables, but they weren't encased in any, any sleeve. Or what we call um plastic pipes or any pi- any pipe, so there was no covering other than they were put in the ground. And with time and age and chemical reactions, uh, is has impacted on the wires. So that's uh, and also created um. This disconnect, disconnection between the water plant and the tank. So that's the number two. The third one is also an emergency for us. It's a covert on Knightly Road. It's been, it's been there for some time now. Uh, we had to go to conservation. And recently, uh, we have the, the last time we were funding was April the thirtieth. And so the conservation has given us a go-ahead with a couple of conditions. And so we are, that's, that's what brought brought us to that forty thousand. But we're thinking that if the conditions can be reduced, we believe that the amount to fix the head wall will be reduced. We are asking because we don't want the covert to be damaged. At this point right now, it's very exposed to the elements and um. We hopefully would fixing up the head wall, it will stabilize uh the the road in that location. Those are the three main projects we are asking for funds at this time.
Any questions on article thirteen on these three projects or Chris? I don't see any. Alright, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
David, Andy Morris Freeman has his hand raised.
Oh, I missed it. Andy, go ahead.
Thank you for taking my question. Chris, on the Mount Warner Tree Removal, do you know the number of trees that are gonna be removed?
We um, we, I don't have exact number because uh we tend to do some of them in-house. But I could get that number to you if um, we have a lot of big trees which are anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four inch diameter. But uh, we, that's what we anticipate the contractor to do for us. But I could get you exact number as soon as uh, now that we are at this level where the select board and the finance committee has. Uh, weighed in into the issue, so if you don't mind, sometime tomorrow, I'll be able to do it.
I think so long as you have the answer by town meeting, I think that'll be okay. People are gonna wanna know, tree cutting can be a little sensitive sometimes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see any. Keep going.
Okay, I'm gonna introduce two representatives from uh Woodard and Curran. Uh, an engineering firm that has been working with the town staff um regarding the levy for some time. And um, I know that Rich Niles is here. Rich, I I don't know if Scott's here as well, is it just you tonight?
Uh, it's just me.
Okay, Rich did a great uh presentation a couple of weeks ago, so we asked him to come back and explain that, explain the assessment study.
Okay, yeah, thanks for having me and allowing me to participate in your meeting. Um, do you have the uh two-page fact sheet, Carolyn? Uh, or do you want me to pull that up and share my screen?
Well, it's between you and Jennifer, whoever does it first.
Okay, I can do it.
Okay, great.
Okay, alright, so I'm I'm gonna just do a quick overview. Um, this is available to the public. Um, it provides some background regarding the the town's flood protection system. Um, many of you may be familiar with this, and so I'm not gonna go through all the details. Um, because you can read a lot of this and it provides some good background about past studies um and some of the needs. But we have a levy, you guys have a levy system that protects against the hundred-year flood event. Along the Connecticut River that runs um south and then intersects with um Route nine. And uh, it actually ties into the rail trail. So the rail trail actually serves to provide flood. and actually ties into the rail trail. So the rail trail actually serves to provide flood protection. So if you can see on my screen here, the blue shaded area is what would flood during a hundred-year flood event, which FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, has mapped. So properties that fall within that need to obtain flood insurance. Properties that are within what we call the protected area of this levy system do not need to obtain flood insurance if they have a federally backed mortgage. So this system provides a value to the community, certainly economically, for recreation, because a lot of people walk along the top of it. It's a nice walk along the Connecticut River. I've done it many times. And the rail trail is, is a scenic, popular area. And so what we've been doing with the town over the last several years is a phased approach to evaluate the status, condition, and maintenance needs of the system. And we're looking at it with respect to FEMA's criteria, which are really strict. This system was built back in the nineteen, late nineteen twenties. And, and for the most part, it, it's, it's meets most of those design standards. There are some it does not meet, and there's some areas where we recommended improvements. Some of these are very minor, animal burrows, some drainage improvements. But there's more significant issues regarding stability, and it's not to say that it's unsafe. It doesn't meet certain criteria that FEMA specifies for their current design standards. And so we, what we, what we're recommending to the town is that you look at what it would take the cost to remediate that, and what other options does the town have to look at improving flood protection? And, and looking at what's the most economical or most, you know, cost-effective recommendation to pursue for capital. So some of the things can be done, and, and Chris in DPW has some items that he can address as part of routine maintenance. There are some improvements that would be fairly significant capital costs. So we want, we're recommending that, that the town do further analysis to look at the economic impact. To do that, we need to do a bit of a feasibility study and come up with some cost for the current system. But in past discussions with the town, we identified an opportunity to look at an alternative to upgrading the rail trail berm, and, which would still be a capital cost, but it could provide significant benefit. The problem is, we don't know if it's really feasible at this time due to environmental constraints. Is it really the most economical decision? But it would provide a lot more flood protection for the downtown area. So this is just a snapshot of what is being protected in terms of building value in, in these two zones. So this is the current zone, which is what's protected now. It's about a hundred and thirteen structures. And if you were to construct a new levy here, it would protect an additional hundred and ninety-six structures. And these are things that are bigger than a shed. And some of those structures are significant gas stations, you know, municipal critical infrastructure like pump stations. So, so we need more information. We need to do engagement with agencies. We need to do engagement with the public to evaluate whether this is feasible. Constructing a new levy system is no small undertaking, and we wanna make sure that that makes economic sense, and it may not. So the outcome of, of the next steps in study could be, you do minimal maintenance, or you do the maintenance you need to do. You don't invest heavily in, in remediation at this time. Or you invest in some remediation and an alternative that proves to be a significant benefit to the community. So the, the steps that we're recommending, and this is, this is what happens with these programs quite often, is you take a stepwise approach because we need more information, engage with the public to determine whether it's worthwhile to move forward. And so before the, the community expands significant capital funds to do so. And so these were the next steps that we recommended, were to evaluate the cost to upgrade the existing system to meet design standards, conduct additional inspections. And this one's a really basic thing. This should be done periodically, no matter what. So this is kind of part of routine maintenance. But there's some detailed inspections that engineers do regarding scour along the river. So we gotta get in a boat. We gotta send cameras through the pipes, look for certain, you know, potential defects. So this is just part of sort of routine work that we're recommending that you do, since it's been several years since that's occurred. Engaging with the public and, and agencies to evaluate the feasibility. There will be environmental impact associated with this. These are, this is a significant system that would, you know, require a lot of disturbance. And so we wanna make sure that that's feasible from an environmental permitting standpoint, and that it will be acceptable to the agency. So there's an engagement process there that we're recommending. And then looking at the cost-benefit of a new levy, so really doing an economic impact analysis to see if we were to, instead of investing in the rail trail, which would be a difficult task because it's owned by DCR, does it make more sense to divert that money to a system that provides more protection? So, so we're really at a conceptual level here, and we need more detailed information and cost to determine whether it makes sense to move forward with that. So this is a stepwise process. And then one of the more, most basic things, there's no real detailed operation and maintenance plan. You know, the town has been doing maintenance on, on the system, but there's a, a level above and beyond that that needs to be included in, in what we call kind of a, a operations plan. That also includes procedures for how to respond during floods, how to coordinate with other agencies, et cetera. And that's a pretty basic thing. So, so that's what's included in this article for the tasks. And, and that, I think is probably my timeline. So hopefully that is helpful.
Any questions on this article? Last call. All right, and you are gonna be at the meeting, right, to speak about this? Rich?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. So I look, look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Will that handout be available for the public?
Yep, it's already printed.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank, thank you, Rich.
Okay.
All right, let's keep moving.
All right. So the Finance Committee will be presenting the final versions of the general fund and enterprise fund budgets at the annual town meeting. It's been a lengthy process of meetings and negotiations with the Select Board, the Town Administrator, and Department Heads. Although the town experienced a drop in local revenues during COVID, impacting both FY twenty and FY twenty-one, we will have over five hundred K in replacement revenue funding from ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan of two thousand and twenty-one. This will allow our town departments to maintain a level of service budget for FY twenty-two in the hope and expectation that revenues will return to previously levels by FY twenty-three. And so, so, some of the points to highlight is that there were no employee layoffs. We were able to do a one-point-five percent COLA increase for the employees. There was no significant reduction in services. The town employees did not set stand, standing job this year amongst COVID. And for the second year in a row, we did have to delay contributions to our OPEB fund. We preserved sufficient free cash for paybacks to stabilization accounts in the fall, and we did maintain a triple-A bond rating.
Amy, did you wanna speak about this at all, from the Finance Committee perspective?
Well, I would, but Carolyn did such a fabulous job that I think she's hit about everything. So I would have to, the only thing I would other, you know, say is that we do have a budget that is recommended for both the, from the Select Board and the Finance Committee going forward, so.
The, was the vote unanimous from the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and Randy, you got some?
Yes, I would like a consensus opinion, whatever you wanna call it. If we get somebody to make a motion to waive the reading of the, every single line item in the budget, I, I, it's my opinion that that makes sense, especially given the outdoors and the heat and the potential for rain to move things along. So I just wanna hear anybody's opinion on that, please.
Can that come from the Select Board, or does it have to come from the floor?
It can come from anybody. The Select Board is part of the floor.
Yeah, I think we did that last year too, didn't we?
I don't remember, John. I don't, I think Amy thought she read, they read stuff, but it just, it's so much, it just goes in one ear and, in one ear and out the other for most people. So I think it makes sense to just.
They did read it last year, and I would recommend, and I would be glad to make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second it then.
Okay, so it'll.
Any questions or any line items that need to be pulled out at any point in time, we can do that?
Right, well, that's what I'll do, John. I will, I will say, you know, we're gonna waive the reading of, if everybody, everybody has to vote for it, it's gotta be a majority vote. And if that's the case, I'll say if anybody has any questions about any line item, just speak up. We're not just gonna shut it, shut it down at that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Randy, were you looking for a, a vote from Finance?
No, 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 just, just wanted to hear opinions, that's all.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Can I say that maybe we could, I, the, that would go for not just the regular art, budget, but the state, or the water in the sewer, so the next article as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Any questions on budget before we move on? I don't see any.
So I just wanna give you the fund balances. The stabilization fund is a million, three hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. Community Preservation Act is two thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, forty-six. Water reserves is one million, five hundred and four, six thirty-seven. Sewer reserves is six ninety-one, nine zero-two. Hadley Media Reserves is two hundred and eleven thousand, four one four. The Sewer Impact Fund is thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight, and that capital stabilization is four thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine.
And I'll ask the question for stabilization, that is, that number there is without our payback that we had pledged to make. That'll be happening in the fall, correct?
Linda can answer that.
Okay. Yes, that is, that have, that stabilization account figure is where we started the fiscal year, less the amount that we spent on the FY twenty-one budget. So when we put the money back, it'll only, it'll increase this amount.
Okay.
Your CPA funding is two million, not two thousand, or whatever you said at first, Carolyn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, forty-six.
All right, any other questions on the fund balances?
No, but I think people are going to ask the question about, is that ten dollars a permanent fixture in people's water bills for the sewer department?
And that is, I, I'm thinking Susan's on. Susan wants to address that, or Chris?
Was that a one-time deal?
I think the Sewer Impact Fund you've had for a while.
When did the board vote on that?
It was just a couple of months ago, and.
That was a forty dollars.
Ten dollars a quarter.
Ten dollars a quarter, and it was voted by the Select Board to be an infrastructure fee to be used either for water or sewer, as the board voted to use it.
Oh, I misunderstood that question. Okay.
And right now it's towards sewer, because that's, as you can see from the numbers, the one that has the issue.
And we're also, well, and we're also going to need funds for Route Nine, the debt for the improvements in the infrastructure that we're making on Route Nine. And we're saving a ton of money piggybacking with DOT, so.
Correct. But I still would like us to take a look at that, that it not be a permanent thing to subsidize the sewer. I want us to get back to having sewer people be responsible for the sewer reserve amount. So we need to take a look at those numbers.
And like I said.
I, I think you folks already decided that you were going to do that, so.
Right, I just wanna reiterate that, Susan, that we need to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
In that conversation, it was only about the forty-dollar amount. I, I don't recall any of that ten dollar. And I look back on the meetings, and I don't see it in there.
It was ten dollars per, per bill, John.
I think you voted for it, John. Yeah, all right. Any other questions?
Yes, he did.
Yeah. All right. Let's keep going.
All right, this is the article, "To Replace the Water and Sewer Lines Under Route Nine in Tandem With the Mast dot Route Nine Widening Project. By completing this work during the project, the town will see a significant cost savings." It will be, it's been estimated that'll be about a million-dollar savings. If we were to do it by ourselves, it would cost a million more. So we are, that is the article, but I am also applying for a Mass Works grant to get reimbursed for that. It was just the timing at this point. We needed to make a commitment before September to Mast dot that we had funding, and that the Mass Works Grant is not gonna be completed until August. So hopefully, this will get reimbursed.
Yeah, it's, have you been keeping an eye on that infrastructure money that's supposed to be coming from feds? Because that, you should be able to apply this to the federal money also at some point.
Yeah, it's too, it's too early to tell what that bill's gonna look like and what it's gonna be targeted to.
Yeah, it's not even out yet, but, uh, just, it's worth keeping an eye on.
Absolutely.
Okay, next.
And this is the Hadley Fire Department is requesting twenty thousand to purchase a used ambulance, and Chief Spike Mabel, I know, is here, so he can address that.
Yes, we, we have quite the opportunity. The Northampton Fire Department has an ambulance that they are taking out of service, and we did sign a letter of intent with them based upon funding. We've had in capital for about ten years now, a request based upon the fire department's study, and also just the five-year implementation plan of the fire department to bring in a basic level ambulance. A new ambulance of this, of this quality is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They are offering it to us for twenty thousand with all the equipment in it. And basically, looking, we, we do have our, this is not replacing our ALS ambulance service that we're under contract right now. We feel that this, this is an important addition to our department as we're, over the past three years, we've averaged missing approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty calls that goes to mutual aid, and also to our Hadley Action Med Two, which is not part of our contract. So we would like to try and pick up those calls with our own department members operating this ambulance service. We have the space for it, and the revenues would be brought into the community for these calls. And it would also continue with the improved response times that we've seen by having our own ambulance in-house. So our average response time is between four and five minutes now compared to what it used to be, which was eight to, eight to fifteen. So we'd like to continue with that improvement and, and bring this, this great opportunity to the town.
I, I believe I'd like to chime in because I, I, I've been working on these ambulance committees since I was on the school committee. So that's too damn long, if you ask me. But anyway, we've been really putting this at the forefront that we've always wanted to at least get ourselves into the BLS, which is just a step into moving forward to the ALS. We have to do BLS for at least a year before you can at, at least apply for the ALS. So this is really a step in the right direction for us to sustain. And I think we've proven that in the long run, that eventually, if we were able to have our own ambulance service, that it would be a, a benefit to the town, and, and also money coming forward for, for the budget and for the department. So that would be my spiel.
If, if you're gonna speak to that, could you say what it is instead of initials? Because I don't think anyone in the audience will know what you're talking about.
Certainly, basic life support, and, and the other is advanced life support.
Yeah, I think that would make a big difference instead of just letters.
I can do, I can do it all, Jane, absolutely.
And Randy and Susan both had questions.
Who gets to go first?
Go ahead, Rand.
Thank you. Mike, year, miles, condition of this vehicle?
Yes, this ambulance, it's a two thousand and nine GMC. It has, you know, it has, it has higher mileage. Uh, it has, you know, it has, it has higher mileage on it, but it's been maintained, uh, immaculately. Uh, the, I can tell you that the department does not, uh, the members of the department are sorry to see it go, but their, their capital plans, which is out an ambulance basically other, every other year. Um, so it's, it's time. Uh, uh, Brian Woschkevitz are my lieutenant, who also handles our vehicle, uh, has, has gone through the thing top to bottom. Um, again, they have all their, their maintenance records with it, and this is a great starting ambulance for us. And, uh, again, uh, this, they're in the process of building their new ambulance, so we're not looking to receive this until probably late fall. And then we would have to go through our process to put it into service as well. Um, again, uh, this is, this is a great opportunity to get our foot in the door and start bringing in some revenues, uh, to support our department, so we're not asking for additional funding.
Is it gas or diesel?
This is a diesel.
So you could also say that, that diesel engines have more of a life than gas engines? You actually just, the number that you're giving me is just broken in.
It's correct, this also includes, just so, just so everybody's aware, this also, they've also agreed, agreed to include the power stretcher with it. Um, just so you know, the power stretcher alone, if we were to purchase it new, is thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that alone is just, it's, it's certified, it's been tested, they're not giving us something that they're just trying to get rid of, but it's more of a cost for them to try and, uh, pull this frame out. And, uh, they're also giving us all the radio equipment, so the radio equipment will be included in this. And, uh, again, it's extremely clean and they really, they really have a robust, uh, system. And just so you know, this has to go through a very strict inspection through the state before it can go into service as well. Uh, so we wouldn't be taking the chance of that failing, uh, for that reason.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
A hard cry from the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars we've been paying emers for the last fifty years, though.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is a great step in the right direction.
And with the amount of equipment included, it's just a bonus.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, any last, uh, questions on Article eighteen? Let's keep going.
Okay. Article, actually Article twenty through twenty-three, I'm gonna ask Amy to, uh, help me out with this one. Um, they're out of order a little bit, but it does make sense. Uh, it's two different funding sources, but I'm gonna let Amy, um, she did such a great job last time. I'm gonna let her explain it.
Okay, so Article, um, there's Article twenty is Gerlinski. The next article would be the same thing, except it's Hanrich. Okay, so these are both APR properties. And, um, basically how it's working is, um, on this, on these APR properties, ninety percent of the funding is gonna be coming from the state and ten percent is gonna be coming to the, to fund it, is coming from the town. It's gonna be split into two, on the ten percent, five percent coming out of the CPA fund and five percent coming out of, uh, conservation, the TDR fund. So that's why it's split into a couple different articles, because it's coming from two different funding sources. But these are both APR, uh, properties, it's Gerlinski and Hanrich.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's good.
And then the next one? She covered the next two, one, two.
Yeah, I go pretty fast.
Yeah, boom, so steeple clock is yours, Amy.
Susan has her hand up again, I think, or unless she didn't take it down.
I think she forgot to put it down.
Okay. All right, let's keep going.
Okay, sorry.
So the steeple clock, um, that they're just requesting because it's not working properly, they're constantly having to maintain it, so it has, the CPA is looking to fund the thirteen-five, um, to help repair that clock. It's, um, and it's based in, uh, it's for historic, it's gonna come out of the historic set size. So, um, Edwin, um, on all these articles, uh, that we talk about for CPA, um, I'm kinda like the, uh, second-hand here, um, Edwin really, he would probably be, he would like to and be the best one to discuss all these at town meeting, if that is okay?
Who's that?
Edwin Matusko.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Sure, it's fine.
I'm his backup.
Okay.
All right, any questions on the steeple clock? Let's keep going.
Okay, this is the Planning Board River Bylaws, and I think Jim and Bill are still here.
Yes, we are, this is, uh, the Article twenty-five is amending the bylaw, the river, river bylaw that is already on the books, but it's bringing it up to present standards with MS four and a bunch of other stuff. The biggest change to this article is, is addressing the, um, RVs, for lack of a better term, that are scattered along the, the Hadley shoreline during the summer months. Right now, if you wanna RV, you're allowed one per lot and you're gonna go through a special permit, um, with a ZBA. This new revised section will allow multiple RVs on the property based on certain criteria, and you will no longer need to go to the ZBA for the special permit. It'll be pretty much by right, the building inspector will be the overseer of this particular section of the bylaw. Now, people are gonna say it makes it a lot easier. Well, the conserva, currently, the, the, you must comply with conservation, fire department, and other Board of Health rules already. But they haven't been enforced for whatever reason. Um, so anybody that is saying that this new bylaw makes it more difficult because of that, it is a total incorrect. If this bylaw fails, the multiple RVs will not be permitted and you'll go back to one per lot, but you'll still have to comply with conservation, Board of Health, Fire Department, et cetera. So it is to the advantage if it's, if it is passed, because it'll make it a, I mean, anybody that has an RV, there's a bunch of hoops that they have to jump through, um, to get the RVs on the property. Conservation, like I said, and that's gonna be the case whether the bylaw fails or not. So it is a, have been, an advantage to the town if this thing passes and to the landowners and stuff, and it'll make it a more straightforward process to get all these permits.
Jim, is that for future owners too, if the lands, piece of land is sold?
If the land, I mean, if the land is sold, typically, mo, money, well, if the land is sold, depending how it's sold or what the new owners decide, um, the permit is good for three years, that the building is, the building department will issue. So if the land is sold and they decide they don't want, um, the RVs, they don't want the RVs. If they do want RVs, it's a three-year permit that they have to renew every three years.
But I don't think, I, can I, uh, Jim?
Yes.
I don't think that that should be correct. I think when the property is sold to somebody else, that they need to go through their own permitting process and it doesn't go with the land. It's like the, uh, alcohol licenses that doesn't go with the building when the building is sold for, or the restaurant is sold. I think that, uh, a permit is issued to that person and it's not issued to the future owner if they sell the property.
The permit goes to the holders of the, uh, I believe to the holders of the RV, is that correct, though?
So I'll, uh, I can take a look at that, but that level of, uh, is really something we have left to the building inspector to deal with.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to get the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA, out of the river, off the river. So, uh, the, the bylaw is intentionally sort of broad and it delegates a lot of authority to the building inspector, who, and I forgetting the buzzword now, but he's also the, uh, floodplain, uh, manager.
Mm-hmm. All right, I was just assuming that with any license or any, um, any type of thing like we do, like I said, with our alcohol licenses, when that building or that land is sold, the alcohol license does not go with that building. They have to apply for that license. I would assume that that would be the same deal if somebody sold their property, that they would also have to initiate their own permit for their own RV or whatever they're gonna use for the intention of that property.
Right, well, a, and, and again, we are deferring to, uh, to the building inspector to develop the regulations for the, the day-to-day operation. We're not trying to regulate it from a zoning perspective.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What Joyce is saying makes sense, because one of the major reasons for the registration is to be able to notify people, and if we all, we all of a sudden don't have anybody to notify. So I think that Tommy should really look at that when he's figuring out his, uh, operational system, if you will.
Yeah, obviously, that is, that is a primary concern, knowing who to, who to reach out to. But again, we are leaving that level of detail to the building inspector and we're, we're trying to strip it out of the zoning bylaw because the zoning bylaw is too clumsy a tool for things like this.
Mm-hmm.
Any other statement has a question?
Yeah, I have a question, Bill. Um, now, if this doesn't pass, it has an impact on National Flood Insurance Program flood maps and how people can insure for flood along the river, isn't that correct?
To, to some extent, and to an unknown extent at the moment. Um, the, uh, everybody's been focusing on RVs along the river, but the first three or four sections of the bylaw talk about development standards along the floodplain, in the floodplain as a whole. And that's what we're really being asked to update. And if we do not update to the standard that the state is setting, and the state is setting a standard based on what the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, is telling the state to do, uh, there is a risk that we may lose eligibility for flood insurance participation, uh, in that area.
Uh-huh.
Which, act, which would impact people with mortgages, because mortgage...
Correct, you...
...firing flood insurance.
If you are in a flood zone, you must get flood insurance in order to get a mortgage, at whatever the cost may be.
So I think it's critical that you say that when we're talking about this article, because that, if people haven't been following the meetings as the select board and others have, they'll have no idea why they should care.
Yeah, that, that, though, those are good points.
Andy has a question still?
Yes, thank you. Um, you said that, uh, if this bylaw passes, people would be able to go from having one RV per site to multiple RV per sites. Uh, did I understand that correctly? And is there a limit to the number of RVs that a person can have at a particular site?
There is a limit based on the criteria of so many square feet and so many feet between RVs.
And the hundred percent, and the hundred-foot setback from the river, correct, Jim?
Yeah, that, but the hundred-foot setback applies no matter what, because that's, that's a current situation even with the existing bylaw. So, yeah, that, that, that will also change things. And if you have more than three RVs, um, on the site, more than likely, you may be considered a campground under the state guidelines. And now you've gotta provide porta-potties as opposed to onsite, just a regular little, uh, toilet in your RV. There's a whole bunch of other criteria that if you have more than three RV that you could have to make, the Board of Health will get involved if there's three or more RVs.
Yeah, I, I think it was a hundred and fifty feet, uh, of frontage on the street side, or was it on the riverside?
The existing, the existing bylaw thing is a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Does the new bylaw is basically by the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of the lots don't have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, some only have forty or fifty feet.
So, we have some lots off of Aquavita Road, for example, and some off of Cemetery Road as well, um, or whatever it turns into after it goes over the dyke. Um, you could have a lot that's only forty feet wide, but is, uh, an acre and a half. So, um, yeah, you, you, you'll have, you, you could have multiple campers or multiple RVs on that site, but really, at some point, it doesn't get as much fun to be the fifth one back, um, on a narrow lot. So, uh, it's gonna be a self-limiting problem, uh, situation to some extent, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Randy, go ahead.
Jimmy or Bill, uh, you said this permit is good for three years. Do you know if the permit that the Conservation Commission has to grant for this is good for three years? Or is that good for just one year?
My understanding is the Conservation Commission, once they grant their license, um, as long as you ask for a timely renewal of it, you can keep on rolling it over. But that has nothing to do with the zoning aspects of it.
That I understand, but I think that is going to be a big issue at town meeting. So if you guys can explain as best you can, that, you know, as Jimmy already said, that's already pre-existing, there's, it's got nothing to do with this bylaw. I'm gonna try to limit the amount of discussion relative to the Conservation Commission, because it, it, it's not perfect.
Yeah, that is definitely out of order to, um, anything, any issues that people have with Conservation Commission are with the Conservation Commission and are separate and apart from the terms of this bylaw. This bylaw never exempted you from, or it, it can't exempt you from compliance with Conservation Commission and Board of Health rules.
Right, so if, again, if you guys would, would iterate that, that would be awesome. And, and then hopefully people will hear you and we can move forward.
Yeah, that this, yeah, there, there's a lot, well, depend, I mean, a lot of the people that have campers on the river, that been, that had been involved in our Zoom meetings when we discussed this, have really settled in that they are content with this bylaw now, the way it's rewritten. But we'll see on town meeting floor.
Exactly, okay, thanks, guys.
To, Tommy had something as well.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself or get on here. Um, well, basically, the, the permit is gonna be, you know, through the, um, landowner. We never did discuss whether if it was sold or transferred. I guess it wouldn't transfer unless it was the exact same campers that were, you know, gonna stay there. You know, if one of the campers that was on there, um, you know, just wanted to reapply, we could work something like that up. We didn't, we never really discussed that, but it's the landowner who will, will be pulling the permit.
Yeah, that was the only question I had, Tommy. I know it opens up another can of worms, but it's, it's probably going to be asked, you know?
I, I asked it, so I mean, I'm, I'm curious, because evidently, when a building or anything else gets sold, it gets sold, so it actually turns it over to the new buyer to apply for a new permit.
And that would make sense, as far as if it was the same campers and the year, three years weren't up. I mean, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, waive the fee for them and just reissue it under the new owner. But I guess, well, you know, never really discussed that part of it.
Okay, have to take a look at it, because again, you got a new owner of the property, they're paying the taxes on it, so it reverts back to them as the, uh, responsible person for that piece of property. So they would have to apply for a permit, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, yes, it would just be whether we, it's the same people, it'd be nice to be able to waive the fee and, and just give them the permit.
Well, it won't be the same people, the person who now that's applying for the permit is paying the fee, not the camper. So when that, when the property is sold, it's the new person applying for, the, the owner of the property needs to pay another fee, because he is now the new owner of the property and the, where the taxes go.
And, and what the, what the bylaw does is give Tom the authority to make those rules and rulings.
Okay.
So I'm, when somebody applies for a, a permit, let's say I own the land and you wanna put a trailer on it and Bill Dwyer wants to put a trailer on it and David Phil, do you each get a permit specifically to you, or are they all issued to me?
They'll all be issued to the individual person, you know, the special... You know, a special permit given to each, each camp or each RV, but the applicant will be the owner that, you know, puts in for the individual. You know, after they've gone through conservation and they're allowed to be in that, in that location.
Okay.
Mr. Jungle, as you said, I, I, I understand, totally agree. I, I guess I was just trying to say if, if, um, those three people owned it, I mean, had three campers there. You know, is whether, why would, you know, we could waive not having them to pay if the same three people were staying there, just issue a whole new permit. You know, the same family, I guess, if just change members of family or something like that.
Yeah, family members is different. So I agree. Now, I, it will, you know, it's up to your discretion, Tom, how you, how you do it. It's, it's your ball. Roll it. You can have it.
That's what we said.
I think it is important to mention too, that there was a committee that was set up for this and there were that participated in the, uh, I guess the formation of this bylaw. So they were consulted and I believe pretty much universally, this, this was considered an improvement over what uh, the existing bylaw was.
Okay, perfect.
That's the feedback we have, yes.
Okay.
Great. If there's no other questions, let's go to twenty-six.
Okay. Uh, this article seeks to change the official date of the annual town election from the second Tuesday of April before town meeting to the third Tuesday in May of each year after town meeting. And if you remember, a non-binding referendum question was on the annual town election and it was yes, three thirty-nine and no, one hundred and twelve.
Okay. Any questions on this?
No.
I'll make a comment. I think it's a great idea because typically the way things work, like for instance, we have a new select person who gets two weeks to figure out everything before town meeting. So I think it's better to have, uh, you know, eleven and a half months to get ready for a town meeting than two weeks.
I, I have stuff I can say pros and cons for it on the floor of the meeting if necessary.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for the articles? Uh, anything else you want to hit, Randy, before we move on? Oh, I'm sorry, we forgot. Twenty-eight.
Parking ban.
Yep.
Yep.
It's basically just saying what, what it says there, that there, we will be doing a winter parking ban, uh, which will allow no parking, uh, at any time on the streets from December first to April fir-, uh, April first. So we've always just, uh, had it brought before us, but we're just making a bylaw saying that this is a, this is a law that's going to take place, so.
Chief Mason's on here. Chief, did you want to chime in on this or are you good?
Um, no, Joyce, Joyce did a good job. I mean, the only thing I would say is that the way we do it right now is really kind of clunky. Um, and to be honest with you, uh, this makes a little bit more sense for members of the public because they'll know when they can't park in the street now. Right now, Chris Okafor calls the select board and says, we need a parking ban for this snowstorm. The select board deems it necessary and unless folks are, you know, watching the, uh, the Hadley, ton of Hadley website during snowstorms, they really don't know that this is occurring. Uh, it doesn't change anything for the police department. We're still going to knock out doors, try to find the folks whose cars are parked there. We're not just going to be telling people indiscriminately. Uh, this just makes it a, a better process and pretty much every town around us has one.
So we should actually, um, hopefully send out notices to businesses that do have their customers uh, park on side streets, that they can no longer do that from December first to April first. Um, and that's just going to be a standard thing for them. They'll have to readjust their parking, um, to accommodate their customers.
Randy?
Ka-ching, ka-ching.
So, are you, is this saying that there is no parking at all or only on a snow emergency?
At all.
That's not what that says to me. You can park there as long as you don't impede snow removal or emergency service functions.
Well, how do you know you're not going to?
Well, that's the, that's the fun stuff, Joyce, that you get into in situations like this. Somebody's going to say, there's only two inches of snow. I'm not impeding any issues. So that might be, I mean, and talk to Chief Mason and see if it makes sense, but.
Well, Randy, the, the reason that, the reason that we wrote it this way is, is specifically because I found this type of language in several other bylaws. And I think the reason that they probably use it is to indicate that the reasoning behind it is for snow removal operations. It's not, you know, for Fourth of July fireworks or something like, obviously the time, time, time of the year denotes that. But I think, uh, the reason that the, the select board decided to go with this language as opposed to others is just to, like, show people that it's for snow. The, the cloud trucks need to be able to get through.
So I, I get that, but I, I also know, you know, one of the big culprits of this, and I'm not going to mention names, uh, but there, there, I'm sure that if it's, you have a beautiful week between December first and April first and it's not going to snow, there's going to be people parking on the side of the street. So that's just my two cents. I guess we'll
This, the bylaw, the bylaw gives a, gives a, a trigger. It, it allows, uh, it allows an enforcement option. Uh, if we cannot find the owner of a car to get it moved, it allows the enforcement to tow it. If we can't find this person, it changes, it does not change the way that we do things. And there's no reason for us to be looking for cars parked on the side of the road on a beautiful weekend, December, uh, except for snow operations. If somebody at town meeting can think of one, I guess I'll have to come up.
And it, and it is explicit there. It says, provided that no parking is allowed at any time on the Hadley Street from December to April first. And that shall include areas immediately adjacent to, and, uh, on-street parking, which would otherwise impede snow removal. So it does say no parking. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't say whether there's snow or not. It just says you can't park from December first to April first, so.
So I'm gonna, I'll let it go because I'm going to agree to disagree, but.
Okay.
A quick background on this is, uh, during, uh, a couple of the snowstorms this last winter, we realized that we didn't have a bylaw on the books, even though we've had signs at the town borders, uh, for who knows how long, saying that we do have this bylaw. So, uh, we searched through, David Nixon helped to search and we could not find any votes that actually put this bylaw in, into effect. Everyone seems to remember it, but we couldn't find any record of it. So it was time to, uh, make the bylaw match the signs that have been in place forever.
I'm not against it. Don't get me wrong. I just, I'm just think that it, uh, it can get you, get into some trouble, but we'll see what happens.
Uh, Andy Marsh Friedman had a question.
Oh, thank you. I withdraw it.
Okay. And then Susan, you had a question as well or was it answered?
Actually, it wasn't about, uh, this article. It was about Article twenty-seven. Can we do that in the consent agenda to change a term of an, uh, appointed individual?
I think we can do anything in the consent agenda that we want to that doesn't require two-thirds. I'm not positive, but I believe.
I, I'm worried about it because that would, as you're the appointing authority for the finance committee, that could move things. I, I, I'm just questioning it. I've, I've thrown it out there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe we can have Carolyn check with the town council to make sure it's not going to be a problem.
I, I'm here, uh, as luck would have it. It's Jeff Blake from KP. I, I, I think Mr. Moderator is correct. You, we could put anything we want in the consent agenda. And you could actually put in the consent agenda something that would require a two-thirds vote. But then every single other, um, article would require the two-thirds vote, so.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, but, but there's no two-thirds vote here. And if the town wants to vote a block of, um, a block of, uh, articles as a consent agenda, they absolutely can do it.
Okay.
I thought we talked about it, wanted to leave it out separate because we put it on, uh, the ballot and then we'll give people time to decide on what they want to do with it at town meeting.
I mean, the referendum was overwhelming.
But that wasn't for this.
Yeah, that wasn't for this.
And it can get pulled, if, if somebody wants to pull it out and talk about it, they can. I'm just trying to speed things up and get us out of there.
I know, Randy.
All right. Did we miss any? Anything else we got to hit?
I've got a couple of questions I want to ask the select board before you close this down.
Sure.
Are there, are you guys giving any awards out?
Yes, that was going to be on my list. We have dedications to, uh, David Nixon and Martha Boysworth that I wanted to volunteer for if no one else did. And then we also have the, uh, Spankable, uh, kids.
I would like that.
Okay, so you're just going to have a dedication of that stuff. All right. Are you going to do a, uh, state of the town, David?
Uh, no, in the interest of time, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. And, all right, that's, so that's it, those three dedications?
David, didn't you, wasn't it supposed to be, uh, Martha and, uh, Janine Giles?
Jennifer, what did we end up voting on?
No, it was David Nixon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It was David Nixon and Martha Boysford.
Okay, I think, I think I made a motion that it, in my, in memoriam to be with Martha and Janine, but.
I wrote it down with David Nixon and Martha Boysford. I'm really sorry. Um, the town report is most assuredly at the printers.
Okay.
Will be delivered tomorrow, so.
We'll catch up for, we'll catch up and maybe do something in the fall.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like good.
Um, Andy, yeah, did you have another question or is your hand still up from before?
Uh, no, I have two quick questions. One is what the, um, um, the quorum numbers will be? Do we still need a hundred people? Uh, and also I have a question about the sound system. At last town meeting, anyone outside of the garage couldn't hear. Um, will there be a, a sound system so, so people can hear?
So I'll answer those. The quorum is still a hundred. And when we did this last year at, at the Hopkins Field, there was no issues with people not being able to hear. So I'm assuming it's going to be the same outstanding setup that it was last year. It was, it was a whole different animal at the safety complex, Andy, and I agree with you. That was terrible. But this worked out much better at the fields.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else, Randy?
No, I think I'm good. We're going to meet before town meeting, correct?
In the hot sweltering sun, yes.
We can meet here.
You love the beach.
I, I do, but I don't like not being at the beach. You got a beach breeze, you know?
Are we meeting upstairs or downstairs at town hall?
Upstairs. I thought we were just going to meet outside. We don't meet inside.
Yeah, we meet on the front porch.
Yeah, there's a beautiful ocean view from the front porch.
Oh, you're dreaming.
I got to fool you somehow, Joyce.
I know, I know. I'll keep that thought in my mind.
We asked for a water fountain to be running too a couple of years ago. You know, you'd, you'd hear the, the water flowing, you know?
What happened to that, the water department? Where did that go?
I don't know. That one in the common, I know we talked about too.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get to it.
Jennifer, did you have something else?
Yep, um, the collector, um, was asking that we do a reminder that fourth quarter water and sewer bills are due on June first. Um, you can make them in person, drop them off, mail them or online.
Perfect.
And, uh, let's see, any, before we do announcements, Jeff, are you here for an executive with us or are you here just for the forum?
I was here just for the forum. If you want me to stay for the executive, happy to.
I'm not staying for no executive. Where did you come up with that?
Well, we posted for it in case we needed it, but I didn't think we needed it. But I figured I'd ask Jeff since he was here, so.
I, I have no further, uh, nothing else has happened in that matter.
Okay. All right. So no executive session. So then, uh, any announcements before we adjourn?
I don't tonight. Oh, yes, yes. We do have one. I want to, uh, wish all of our public safety, um, our police, our fire, our emergency services, our ambulance. Uh, it's National Week for Public Safety. And, um, I just want to say a, a big thank you to everyone that does work for um, our safety in this town, that they do an outstanding job and really appreciate everyone.
Susan?
Uh, just thoughts and prayers for Scott Ring and his family.
Scott Ring?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Last call for announcements. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You made it, Joyce.
I got it.
All right. Second by Jane and, uh, if I could get a roll call, Jennifer?
Roll call Phil?
Yes.
Kevin Smith? Jungle?
Yes.
Miss Givitts?
Yeah.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see you on Saturday.